I would like to say that I am here to call this the Penrich School Board meeting to order. Please scan the questions.
Well, it leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mrs. Cullen? Mrs. Dolan?
Here.
Ms. Pilderry? Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Dr. Yornell?
Here.
I just want to announce for the sake of the community that Mrs. Cullen is participating by phone this evening, and so she is present at the meeting, but kind of she's just sitting here next to me in this black phone. Thank you.
Okay, first up is public comment. The Penrich School Board welcomes public comment. According to Policy 903, we remind everyone of the following: Public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments to protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community. The Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals such as students or district employees privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrators or board members, or to communicate with the Board and superintendent privately by sending an email to PSDSchoolBoard@Penrich.org. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. And just a reminder, we usually wait till all the comments are made and then responded.
I'm not present, but may I just remind the speakers that we do observe that three-minute period. If we get to the end of the three minutes, I will ask you as parliamentarian to summarize your thoughts and conclude your remarks so it's fair to everyone else in the meeting on time. So, thank you.
Okay, the first question I have sent up is Kyle Spizito.
Kyle Spizito, purpose. Good evening.
Sir, can you turn around?
You've got Kyle Spizito purpose? Good evening. I am pleased to have the opportunity to address the Board. In my service to our community, I regularly have the privilege to work alongside adolescents directly to directly address the very issues they face. On task forces such as the Young Adult Suicide Prevention Subcommittee of Bucks County and in youth groups intended to promote social connections and provide support, I have the opportunity to hear from middle and high school students who are confronted with an array of complex and difficult challenges. Too many of them struggle with social and emotional difficulties, exacerbated by insufficient mental health treatment. Too many of them are bullied, harassed, and overlooked. And too many of them are struggling with recovery and dependency disorders without desperately needed support. These are the children our system misses. These are the students that are the least heard and the students with the most need. I have paid close attention to the issues of safety in our district, and I appreciate the Board's effort to bring more awareness to the issues of suicide, social alienation, and bullying for Rachel's Challenge, and for working to secure the district with school police officers. However, I believe that we need to go further. We need to do more. Like many of you, I had the opportunity to attend Rachel's Challenge this past week, and I was struck by when the founder, Daryl Scott, stated that for every one student killed in a school shooting since 1999, over 800 students have died by suicide. He asked the question, "Why aren't you talking more about this?" So, let's talk about it. Suicide is an epidemic. In 2018, the CDC reported a 25% increase in suicide between 1999 and 2016. According to our own 2017 Pennsylvania Youth Survey, the class of 2020 reported 9% of them has attempted suicide, and with significantly more reporting suicidal ideation. In 2011, while I was still attending Penrich High School, I lost one of my best friends to suicide as well. I know the impact it can have on a community, on a family, and on friends. This is not, there's not a person I know who has not been touched in some way by this issue. The realities that our students face have to be acknowledged and addressed from every angle. Our district cannot afford simple solutions to complicated problems. It is imperative that we act now to ensure the best future for all our students, and it is crucial that we continue this conversation. I hope that you will join me. Thank you for your time.
I've spoken to you before, I'm Jim O'Connor, purpose, in front of my son, Dece. I've spoken to you before, but I think at this point it's important to give you a bit of my background. I previously spent 12 years as a law enforcement officer in our area municipality. Six of those years was on Central Bucks Serv team, or if you can remember, SWAT as an operator. I've been attacked with fists, I've been attacked with bombs, I've been shot at, I've shot at human being. I'm very familiar with what we're dealing with, with the matter of armed security in the schools. There appears to be a significant misunderstanding here about the terms we're using that I'm concerned about. If we were talking about an SRO, School Resource Officer, I wouldn't be here. You put a sworn LEO that's dealing with crime and investigation on a daily basis, that'd be great. What we're essentially talking about, though, with this Act 44, is an armed security guard. I know we can say because of the Act that it's a school police officer, but this is not the same thing, and I don't want the Board to be thinking they're getting the same thing. A law enforcement officer spends every day armed. Every situation they go into, they have a gun. They're going into domestics, traffic crashes, they're dealing with lost kids, they're dealing with assaults, they're getting attacked. In every fight, they're learning, they're remembering they have the firearm, they're being stressed, and they're learning how to deal with that. That's all part of the training, so that if you do get called to make that fatal decision whether or not to take a life, you'd be ready for it. All these little stresses add up and teach you, maybe you can't do something. Again, what, sorry, give me a minute. Dr. Walton spoke previously before about statistics, about how it's important, and how nothing really tells you what the school shootings that aren't good, bad, one ran away, one prevented something. What I would do normally in that case when my statistics are lacking is I expand it. I go to local municipalities, I go to the counties and the state and the country in which we live. And what those statistics clearly tell us is that more guns means more death. It's not a good thing. You're essentially going with the budget you're talking about. You're going to be hiring at less than half of what a uniformed police officer would make. Your selection of applicants is going to be strongly limited, and the extent of training that the Act 44 is telling you to give with the one day a year of firearms training and maybe two days of updates on legal proceedings is in no way sufficient, in no way worth the money. I'm sorry, I'm just going to call that. You're not supposed to be somewhere like this. I'm sorry. In closing, I'm just going to ask you that in my 12 years, I never investigated a case with a firearm where a gun was used to protect a home or a person dead. All the firearms deaths, all the firearm assaults were against the person, a person in that household. We're voting now to bring guns into the Penrich families' home. I can't emphasize enough how that's a bad idea. I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Benjamin Purcell?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm making this statement tonight in honor of my father, Delano Purcell, as in Franklin Delano, who was involved a child with depression. In his last decade of life, he's now just been certified for hospice, but he's been an ardent advocate of the basic principles of democracy. In the past week, there've been three school massacre-related suicides. Two were student survivors of the Marjory East Stoneman Douglas School Shooting, and just today, the father of a young six-year-old Sandy Hook Elementary School student, Aviel Richmond, he was a neuroscientist, Jeremy Richmond, and he was working with the Aviel Foundation to uncover the underpinnings, the brain-related underpinnings of violence. Just a little over a week ago, there was the mosque shooting in New Zealand. That shooter name-checked Anders Privet, a white supremacist who attacked children's camp in Norway. One man with iPhones and automatic weapons who killed 80 people. I questioned the use of our public funds for an officer or a security guard who's got a six-shooter in Centstown Fire. I think that the resources that we have could be used in a better way. Thank you.
Any other comments? As far as the comments regarding the suicide rate, that's something we've been talking about. It's something we've been talking about in numerous board meetings, committee meetings, it's something the administration has been talking about, and it's something we've been doing something about. We've hired additional crisis counselors, we've increased our guidance counselors, we've added additional programs to help students and provide those supports. The Rachel's Challenge that we brought in was a big part of, you know, even another program to help with that, and I'm going to share some comments regarding that later in my President's Report. But it is something that we take very seriously, it's something that every one of us takes seriously, and it's something that we're doing everything we can, and we're always open to suggestions. I think I heard some comments identifying that there's a problem, but if people have suggestions on additional solutions, we're always open to hearing additional ideas, and you know, the administration is always working on additional ideas for that. As far as the comments regarding the hiring of the SPO, that's coming up later on the agenda, and those comments are going to be addressed at that period. Okay, next on the agenda is the President's Report. I don't know if many of you got to see, some of you were still out in the hallway before you came in, but we had the slideshow of all the snowmen up, and I hope you enjoyed seeing all of them. There were about 240 snowmen that were built representing 338 students, staff, and community members, and as you could see, the talent was truly amazing. Totally blew us away. The preliminary budget was rolled out at the last Finance Committee meeting. This is the first year in at least 20 years, which is as far back as we can go electronically, that we have a balanced budget with no tax increase and no structural deficit. We are not borrowing from fund balance and are not taking on any new debt. This is also the third consecutive year with no tax increase. There have only been two additional years in the last 20 years where there has been no tax increase. Thank you to Dr. Bolton for your leadership, and to Mr. Dahlberg for your hard work on this budget, and to my fellow board members and the rest of the administrative team for your vision and dedication and hard work on this, so we appreciate it. The Board approved a proposal to reduce administrative overhead by decreasing the number of supervisors from six to four and provide additional supports to the classroom through aides and instructional coaches with an overall net decrease in the budget. Tonight, we will vote on the final portion of this proposal to add the instructional coaches. The supervisory model will shift to a K-12 model of supervisors, which will provide better vertical articulation to the curriculum at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. So, the supervisors would be dedicated to a subject area from K-12. Another item on our agenda tonight is air conditioning for elementary schools. Tonight, the Board will vote on a proposal to add air conditioning to large spaces, including cafeteria, gymnasium, and library, at all seven elementary schools, so the classes can rotate through those areas on hot days and minimize the time students are working in excessive heat. While evaluating the situation concerning air conditioning, it was determined it would take several years to be able to air condition all schools. This proposal allows for all students to get, and staff, to get relief for the next school year, so this will all be done over the summer, provided that passes tonight. Another thing, another important item on our agenda tonight is kindergarten busing. We are looking to approve a one-way kindergarten transportation for kindergarten students, and the students would be absorbed in the morning and afternoon routes with parents providing transportation in the middle of the day. The Upper Bucks County Technical School Joint Operating Committee unanimously passed the proposed budget for the 2019-2020 school year that ends the gentleman's agreements that have significantly underfunded the Upper Bucks County Technical School for over a decade. It refunds the overpayments that resulted from the second gentleman's agreement two years ago and begins to fully fund the Upper Bucks County Technical School in compliance with the Articles of Agreement. JOC board members along with the superintendents and business administrators from all three sending schools work together with the administration from UVCTS to accomplish these goals. Back in 2006, a gentleman's agreement was put in place that would artificially cap district increases and pull substantial funds from fund balance, creating a significant and unsustainable structural deficit. The caps were proportional, so sending districts were underfunding it equally. In 2018, a second gentleman's agreement was put in place by the JOC, requiring the district whose payment would decrease to give up that decrease and make the same higher payment as the year before. This resulted in Penrich disproportionately making an overpayment of $136,442, and Palisades making an overpayment of $24,718. The Penrich School Board voted down the budget. The UVCTS budget only needs a majority of two districts to approve it, but to change the funding formula being used, the majority of all three districts would have needed to approve it. This budget refunds the overpayments to the two sending districts and follows the funding formula as written in the Articles of Agreement. It also bases the budget on actual spending as well as fund balance actually utilized last year. I want to thank Dr. Hunter, the Quaker Town Superintendent and Superintendent of Record for the Upper Bucks County Technical School, and Jeff Sueda, the Executive Director of the Upper Bucks County Technical School, for their leadership on this, as well as the other JOC board members, superintendents, and business administrators. We are going to be voting on that budget tonight. So, just to kind of help you understand the, what was happening with the Upper Bucks County Technical School budget, if you look at the screen above, you can see that under the old proposals, if it was using the gentleman's agreements, it would have been capping the budget, capping the highest sending district at 2.3%. So, if you look at what would have been proposed for this year, the highest paying district would have been, the highest increase, so it's based on enrollment, what percentage of students you are sending to the tech school. So, if your enrollment increases, whoever's enrollment increases the most would get the biggest jump. So, if you look, Palisades had the biggest increase in their enrollment, so they would have seen the biggest increase in their contribution. And so, you can see in the third column that theirs would be capped at 2.3%. And since it was being capped proportionally, the Penrich School District's contribution would have been capped at .37%, and Quaker Town's would have been capped at negative 1.48%. So, there actually would have gone down 1.5%. And so, you would see a decrease for Quaker Town's contribution at almost 45,000, and increases of, and increases of 17,000 for Palisades and 8,000 for us. You'd be looking at basically us sending the tech school $20,000 less towards the budget than we sent last year because of the way that that formula worked. And if you would put the second gentleman's agreement in place, that would mean that Quaker Town would have been the one who would have seen the decrease this year, and so they would have disproportionately lost almost $45,000. Did I just switch screens? Did it work? Okay, thanks. So, if you look at this, the reason you see such, the reason it has more of a negative impact this year is because Palisades has the lowest number of students that they send. So, when you proportionally cap Palisades' budget and Palisades' increase, their percentage of students is 13%, so they send about 13% of the budget. So, when you're capping 13% of the budget at 2.3% and then proportionally capping the larger sending districts, so you know, 86, 87%, you know, that's why you see that big of a, that big of a difference. And this shows you what happened this year with the, you know, with funding the tech school and including the, putting back in the deductions that were overpayments for two years ago for Penrich and Palisades. The next thing I wanted to talk about was Rachel's Challenge. We did have a wonderful turnout from the community and students who saw it during the day and even came back. And I just wanted to share a couple of things that stood out to me since this, since this challenge. First, you know, after the high school, after the high school training, they were told to come back on Friday morning and bring two friends and bring two, you know, and each time they would bring two more friends to, to work on all of their ideas for how to carry out Rachel's Challenge. And the ideas that the students came up with were really great ideas to help, and they made a good point about sharing that it is a challenge, right? Because three months from now, five months from now, two years from now, when this isn't present, when the presentation of Daryl Scott isn't in your mind anymore, it's a challenge to keep making those choices. And I was really struck by some of the comments from some students, and I'm not going to quote their names specifically, but I'll share some of their comments. One person said, "The speaker today touched so many hearts, including mine. I'm so grateful that Penrich was willing to bring them and tell Rachel's story." In the training, students were sharing very personal experiences and struggles, and it was powerful to see the transition between when the kids came in and, you know, were just kind of sitting off on their, you know, sitting on their own, and how by the end of the training, they had become like a family. And when the students were sharing their, you know, their very personal experiences, the other students were embracing them and giving them support, and it was just a really powerful thing to see. Another student had shared with me that there were, they were two, she and another student had a falling out and were sitting at different lunch tables, and the one young lady came up to her and said, "You know, Rachel's Challenge helped me realize we need to be friends," and you know, and now they're back to sitting together much. So, it was those kinds of things. But you know, you never, it was surprising, too, when you hear the struggles that some of these kids are going through and how they shared it openly with their peers, and you know, it was a really powerful experience. Another, one of the students that was leaving the one training said to me, "I didn't realize all the things we're not doing that we need to be doing, and I'm so excited to start doing them." A teacher came up to me at the end of the one training and gave me a hug and said, "Thank you for bringing us here. We've been looking for something, I've been looking for something like this for a long time, and I'm so glad that this has really made a difference." So, those are some of the, you know, powerful things that stood out to me, and I'm really excited to see this journey continue. And I know that the administration in all of the buildings is really working hard to make sure that this continues in a program that supports students. And the last thing I was just going to mention was, we had this STEAM Saturday, this Saturday from the Bucks County, that the Bucks County IU was going out and going to different school districts, and it was really neat to see all the different challenges that they had set up for the kids. And actually, one of the challenges was for them to get their Ozobot from the Penrich School District to Hershey so that they could get to the basketball game. So, that was one of their challenges that day. And you know, they created mazes and, you know, helped to get them there. So, it was really neat. And next up, we're going to go to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I appreciate that. I just have a lot of really good news about students and staff that I want to share with you, a lot of recognitions tonight. First, in terms of athletics, we have 10 winter sports, and four of those 10 sports had students or the whole team qualify for state recognition, and another one of them, a fifth team, missed it by one game. And so, we're just really proud of the accomplishment as well as just the quality of the young men and women that represent Penrich proudly. So, I want to recognize a couple of them, especially tonight, the people who qualified for states. First, within wrestling, I'd like to recognize Junior Logan Green, who was able to compete at states. He won one match at 195 pounds. He was, as announced last month, the district one 3A East title winner with a pin in 46 seconds over Quaker Town's Max Russell. Logan, are you here tonight? Let's recognize you.
He's not here.
Let's recognize him. Next is in swimming, and we've talked about this young man a couple times because he keeps breaking his own record. And so, the season's finally over. Congratulations to sophomore Joseph Ham, who broke his own school record in the 100 breaststroke and finished 16th at the state's meet. He also took first place in the 100 breaststroke and second place in the 200 IM at the suburban one league continental conference championships. Joseph, are you here to be recognized? Go on down, please. We need to also recognize Coach Grant and Coach Jenna. If they would come down as well for the picture, we'd appreciate it. I asked Joseph if he had next year's goal already set, and he said he's going to think about it and get back to us in terms of his performance next year. Next is our indoor track. We have to congratulate our boys relay team of Bobby Grishere, Anderson Diamond, Luke Isler, Matt Isler, and their coach, Hojer, on winning the gold medal in both the on winning the gold medal in both the 4x400 and the 4x800, the state indoor track and field championship. Coach Hojer, all the way. Also, I want to just mention that he's in his 46th year coaching for Penridge, 36 as the head coach of the track team. In, also, in the individual 400 meter race, Anderson Diamond placed second individually. So let's recognize these gentlemen. Can you get us off? Okay, mom's got what they need. Thank you. Congratulations. And our last team to be recognized tonight is our men's basketball team. I think we all know the story. They are the Eastern Pennsylvania Champions after amazing wins over Abington, Methacton, and LaSalle. They placed second in the entire state after their unbelievable game this past Saturday against Kennedy Catholic up in Hershey. In addition to their excellence on the court, this team has also made a priority of giving back to their community. They routinely invited our life skills students to participate in practice and spent a Saturday afternoon in January presenting a clinic to young students at the Upper Bucks YMCA in Quaker Town. We want to recognize this team and their coaches. I know that this loss may hurt for a couple of days, but I promise you that these are memories that you will keep for a lifetime. And I do want to thank you and congratulate you on your success, but thank you especially for inspiring this community and demonstrating the true power of a team when working together. We appreciate your accomplishments and we recognize those gentlemen. Coaches, Dan Branch, Jason Moyer, Steve Love, Richard Barron, Jeff Bishop, and head coach Dean Barry. Softworks, Ryan Menstatter, TJ Grenda, David Lasocca, Colin Monacca, Hallen Post, Ray Stumpfo, and Ruth Yoder. Juniors, Paul Troy, Trent Fisher, Christian Golden, David Phillips, Connor Siebel. And seniors, John Dominic, Nick Gunn, Jack Lesbien, Pat Lesbien, Jonathan Post, and Sean Yoder. Do I understand you being nominated for an S-Beat with a lot of... Take the picture. Don't lose pictures. Oh, we're sorry. It doesn't matter. I'm not that good-looking anyways. It doesn't matter. All right. Wait till the parents put their cameras down. Joe, I think they want your head out of their picture. No offense. That's the problem when you're being on a team, right? John. Congratulations. 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 Let's do one more congratulations for all of our...
And I'd also just like to say thank you to Calvary Church, who donated 500 T-shirts so we could have a sea of green in the audience for the basketball game. So thank you to them as well.
I would like to also recognize the Penridge Club Ice Hockey Team that has recently won the Suburban High School Hockey League Class 2A Championship with a thrilling 2-0 win over Central Bucks Sapp. Another wonderful thing that happens each season is that each team recognizes their scholar athletes. So recently, all the winter sports teams named their scholar athletes for the season. This achievement is based on academics, athletic accomplishment, as well as character. So I'd like to congratulate for Boys Basketball, Sean Yoder; Girls Basketball, Emily Kramer; Boys Bowling, Jason Hume; Girls Bowling, Melissa Wilmes; Boys Indoor Track, Thomas Geiger and Christian Hangy; Girls Indoor Track, Jessica Tikedin; Boys Swimming, James Main; Girls Swimming, Reese Trager; Cheerleading, Natalie Talone; and Wrestling, Evan Wyatt. So congratulations to all the scholar athletes. And just so you don't know, think that athletics is all we do around here, we have an awful lot of music accomplishments as well to recognize. I'd like to congratulate Brett Miller, who celebrated his 16th birthday by being featured in an episode of State of the Arts New Jersey. Brett plays the pipe organ and is an expert accompanying classic silent movies. The show met up with the young virtuoso at the Trenton War Memorial as he played the original score of the 1927 silent film sci-fi classic Metropolis. And there is a link on our website with the full segment where you can see Brett performing on that beautiful pipe organ. Also, congratulations to our indoor guard. The Penridge High School indoor drum line and guard received, I'm sorry, the drum line received second place, and the indoor guard took third place at the championships at Parkview Valley. Congratulations to our middle school jazz. All three of our middle school jazz bands received excellent ratings at the Penbrook Jazz Festival. Congratulations to Penn Central for the best sax section, close to my heart; the Penn North for having the best trumpet section; Lauren Sax from South for best vocal soloist; Dylan Varexa from North for best guitar soloist; and Danny Giardine from Central for the best trumpet soloist. We have four Penridge singers who will be representing Penridge at the 2019 PENEA Region Six Course Concert at Hattieford High School this upcoming weekend. Congratulations on this incredible accomplishment for those four singers. Academically, we have other things to recognize. I'd like to congratulate the students and staff at GRASS, who had a fundraiser recently for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation and raised over $4,000. It was a completely student-organized and sponsored event. The teachers went along for the ride. It was, it was a wonderful story. I know you're going to hear a little more about this later from Haley, but I want to congratulate the Upper Bucks County Technical School, School students who earned medals recently in the Skills USA District 11 Competition. We had 11 students from Penridge who received either first place, second place, or third place, and our three first-place visitors will be moving on to the state competition at Hershey in April 10 through 12. And they are in customer service, Shaila Rockets, who is an 11th grader; in diesel equipment, Owen Orser, who's a senior; and in health knowledge, Bald Taylor Haynes, who's also a senior. Let's congratulate those three students. Further academic recognitions, I'd also like to brag and to thank about the STEAM, the STEM Saturday that happened this past Saturday at GRASS. This is a program the Bucks County Intermediate Unit started a couple of years ago, and so we adjusted the program and did a collaboration with them just for Penridge students. And so in grades one through five, we had 120 students. We had eight high school student helpers. We had six teachers and many other support personnel who gathered on Saturday to spend three hours on a robotic speed. And it was a lot of fun watching the students play with the Ozbots and the Spheroths. So I'd like to thank Ms. Jones-Falese and Dr. Kathy Shai for their administrative planning and for organizing the event. Thank you, Dr. Shai. Coordinator Ken Erman, teachers Lori Peterson, Peg Bolak, Tracy Myers, Amy Weir, Kristy Skogan, and Erin Whitehead, as well as support personnel Dana DaVinci, Howard Vogel, Dan Barrett, and Brian Kreps for all that they did for the, for the group. So thank you. We're excited to announce that this year, we are fortunate to be able to provide 17 scholarships for Camp Invention. Two were provided by Camp Invention, and the other 15, a huge thank you, were provided through a grant from the Lehigh Valley Community Foundation. So we want to thank them. Camp Invention is a camp that has STEM experiences for elementary-age students and is being held this summer from July 8th through 11th at Central Middle School. Registration will be available on our website. We'd like to also congratulate our three Honesty to the Mind teams for their clean sweep of first-place finish finishes in the Southeast Regional Competition recently at Pensbury High School. Our eighth-grade team from Penn Central and our ninth and 10th-grade teams from the high school will all move on to state finals next month. So we'll have them in, in April or May to run the contest. Lastly, I'd like to also add my thank you about Rachel's Challenge. You can see some of the banners that are hung across the front of the stage. All of the students and staff and community members who participated were encouraged and challenged to sign a banner like the ones you see in front. So you see some of them from the schools that we are hanging then in all of the schools as a reminder of that ongoing challenge that we heard about at that time. I'd like to first thank Dr. Price for his leadership and his organization. It really was Dr. Price who, who once the idea got rolling, took over all the pieces of the phone calls and planning all the events. So thank you, Dr. Price. It was a wonderful couple of days. We appreciate that. I'd also like to thank the board for your support of these presentations and your trainings as well as your attendance. And just wanted to announce to the community that follow-up meetings have been held at all of the schools. In two of the middle schools, there have been two follow-up meetings, but at the high school and the other middle school, there's been one follow-up meeting where the students and the staff and other students who chose to be involved have gathered to do planning sessions, both for activities for the rest of this school year, but also then to think about ideas and how it can attach naturally to what the student does for next year. And so we will be, over the next couple of months, providing updates on those, but that's one of the, the beautiful parts of Rachel's Challenge is that it really is a challenge for you to continue in the community and not just be a one-time or an archaic five-time event for the presentations that we have. So I want to thank all those who were involved and were able to afford to be up there. And that is the superintendent's report.
Next is the student liaison report.
Hi. I know I won't be able to replace Shay Gork. He's, he's out today, but I'll try my best. I know Mr. Fair would be a little upset if I didn't mention the high school jazz band and jazz ensemble as a part of the music that we have at Penridge. They've been doing really well this year. I'm excited to see how we do at Champs, which is on the 12th, April. I'd also like to give a little shout-out to the, to the musical happening. I can't get the date. I forgot. I think it's the week before. But Cinderella is happening the week before of that week, and I'm really excited to hear about that. On the singing council side, we have the Blood Drive coming up April 11th along with Mr. Penridge. I'd be happy to be involved with that. It's the, it's a male talent performance. So we should be ready for that at 6:30 that night, and the Blood Drive is that morning in school. Other than that, I know I really haven't heard from all of the winter sports successes this season. I'm excited to see what happens in the spring. Thanks.
Okay. I'd like to start with the tech school. We have Upper Bucks Catering. Ms. Ott, who is in charge of the cat at the tech school, is managing catering. And you can visit our website. We have two venues, and you can see how much it is for certain amount of people. Next, we have Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. It's on Saturday, April 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. It's $8 per adult, $5 per child, ages from 3 to 9. And kids who are two-years-old and younger are free. It's also $5 for a printed picture with the Easter Bunny and those bunch of activities, like, in Easter egg type for kids. Skills USA winners, overall, we had 19 people with first place. We have 14 people with second place, and 12 people with one third place. And then the Rock Bridge Marsh Rod opens on March 26th. The hours are from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. And you can see the website for the days that are open. And last, I have My Kingdom Plus, which is the Upper Bucks Technical School. It's now operating, plans for prepaid lunch payments. And you can visit the website for more details.
So Joe, what industry do you like?
I like the trumpet.
Excellent. Okay. Cinderella is April 4th, 5th, and 6th. It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I understand that the tickets are selling out quickly. So please get the wine changes.
Okay, next on the agenda, the approval of the consent calendar. I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through 10. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Price. Questions or comments from board members?
Yes. I'd like to have the question amended for the February 25th. My name is not a player in relation to those who attended. It does appear several places below in terms of motions and reporting out the personnel committees. So if that could be changed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Ayers on Parliament's for the revision. Would you like that changed?
Oh, I'm used to it. It's the end of the alphabet to see these.
Okay, so will they make that change? Questions or comments from any board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, nine, zero. Okay, next is the committee reports, activities, Mrs. Walters.
Okay, we met on March 5th. At our meeting, we discussed before, a work week, which is on our 2019, and also forums for international football. And you have one item this evening. We're voting. Is the district a candidate for the break? So this is for the class of 2019 graduation. It's to be scheduled on Thursday, June 13th, 2019, 6:00 p.m. Let's see where we're in. Okay, and then our next meeting is going to be on late April 19th.
Next is the curriculum committee.
Thank you. First, I would like to say, sorry that I'm late. My youngest received a sacrament of confirmation today. We were able to do that and have dinner. And the good news took me all the way from my house to here. That's how long it took for you to recite all of the good news that's been happening in the district. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm happy I got to greet the, the students in the hallway who are honored, recognized. So our curriculum committee met on Monday night, the 18th. And we have a couple of things. I'm sorry, my computer's not turned on. We have an approval for the textbook for the summer reading assignment. And that is the AP Seminar Summer Assignment Textbook, which is a book called The Culture Code, which I did read. I said this at the curriculum committee, but I'll repeat that if you could get that book and read it, I think it's a wonderful book just for anybody to read. I really enjoyed it and had a lot of valuable information in there about collaborating. It is the most honest take on collaboration that I've ever read. So I, I do support it, and so I'm going to make a motion to approve the textbook Culture Code for the AP Capstone Summer Assignment.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Prowse. Questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries, nine, zero.
Thank you. And the next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for ended April 8th.
Facilities, Mr. Prowse?
Thank you. The facilities committee met on March 12th. We have several items for the board tonight. First item is approval of obsolete items. I make a motion to obsolete the items listed as... I make a motion to obsolete the items listed as A through F.
Questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Next up is the approval of the capital improvement bid. And I'm going to do this as one motion with all of the bids on there, so just bear with me. This is a motion to accept bids as listed for the two thousand and nineteen capital improvement projects. District-wide air conditioning installation project. That's mechanical construction contracts one, three, and six. The low bidder is JBM Mechanical, base bid nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Mechanical construction contracts two, four, five, and seven. Low bidder is Myco Mechanical, base bid one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Next item is Diver Air Elementary School Switchgear Replacement Project. Electrical construction low bidder is M.J.F. Electrical. Base bid one hundred thousand dollars. Next item is district-wide paving improvements. General construction, paper and paper paving, base bid one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred, with the alternates, another three hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Next item, place pool, window replacement and messinary repairs project. Low bidder Jones Messinary, base bid three hundred and thirty-six thousand, alternates one through five, two hundred and forty thousand. Diver Air Elementary School walk-in refrigerator freezer replacement. Low bidder Ben Builders Inc., fifty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Next item is Blue Elementary School flooring replacement project. General construction, white flooring, base bid one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty, for a total of five million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Second, questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
I just want to recognize both Mr. Kelly Harper, who's our district operations director, as well as Mr. Sean Dogger, our business administrator. All of these projects that you see are part of our six-year capital plan, and the money for this has been budgeted over a six-year period, so we do have funds planned for all of these as well as the improvements over the next five years. I've said a couple times publicly that one of the things, I was looking at Penn Ridge coming in last summer, was the planning that's done for the buildings and the care that is on the buildings, because that can very quickly become very expensive if you're not taking care of the buildings over a regular period of time. And because of the work of those two gentlemen in their departments and all the people that have come before that, they're really well-suffered, so thank you to them.
Right. Next item is a motion to approve Sergeant Enterprises for asbestos removal and related work at Blue Elementary, summer of nineteen, ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars.
Questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve Penn Ridge School District providing kindergarten busing one direction for regular education students beginning with the two thousand and nineteen, twenty-twenty school year.
Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? I just want to again highlight the fact that we're getting ten to fifteen percent extra instructional time by adding kindergarten transportation, because we can't have that drop-off time at the same time because of the logistics of all of that traffic, and so this adds that extra instructional time for kindergarten, so that's the issue. Any other questions or comments?
All right. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for...
Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries nine zero.
Now we're on. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April ninth.
Okay, the next up is the finance committee meeting, the finance committee. And the finance committee... We have, the first motion is to approve contracts, so I'll make a motion to approve contracts A through K. Second. Questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. So... So I'm gonna, I didn't realize that this continued on the second page, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve items two, to approve... Oh, wait, that's just, it's still... Okay, sorry. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Upper Bucks County Technical School two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget. Questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. And the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April ninth. And next is the IU report. So a couple of highlights from the IU meeting. Our Bucks County Intermediate Unit Occupational Therapists were presented with the two thousand and nineteen Philadelphia Region Fieldwork Consortium Educator Award. It was awarded to us in appreciation for our commitment to occupational therapy, fieldwork, education. So they talked about how art is alive at the Bucks County IU and how it's been such a huge focus for the IU. They have a long tradition of celebrating the arts, and the tradition started in nineteen forty-nine, when a brilliant forward-thinking Bucks County superintendent of schools and passionate prolific Bucks County artist wanted to make sure that all Bucks County students, regardless of background, had the opportunity to benefit from the rich cultural and artistic heritage in which they found themselves. This tradition has been honored throughout the decades and brings us to the present day, and they go through the whole history of it, which is really, which is really neat. And hopefully you can put this somewhere so that I don't spend twenty minutes going over it for you, but it's really interesting, and, you know, they had an art show recognizing student art right before the meeting there as well. And during the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year, the Bucks County IU and the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology worked together on a journey to create a video project to preserve the unique history of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Art Collection, and they actually have those videos available to see too, so hopefully we can put them somewhere that you can access them. Monkey's Uncle and our student work. The owner of Monkey's Uncle is in Doylestown. Every year she does something to include student work, and this year she's utilizing one of her students' high interest in drawing as a way to bring customers to support his artwork and her shopping bags, and he has, and he decorates all of these bags, so that when people go in there and shop in her store, they take, they take home one of his bags with their items in it. Monkey's Uncle is a retro vintage T-shirt boutique specializing in old-school Philly sports, pop culture, and concert vibes. Brain injury classroom students were helping the homeless in Philadelphia. The PCOM student-run clinic is the first clinic in Philadelphia area to be actively coordinated by osteopathic medical students attending the Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine. Attendings and students provided free preventative and primary health care to patients while also connecting them with future needed health care and related services. There's a two thousand and nineteen golf classic coming up to support the Bucks County IU Education Foundation. It's their twenty-second annual golf outing, and it's on July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. It's hosted at the Doylestown Country Club, so mark your calendars for that. They also recognized Jose Alicia, who has been working at Burger King and Porsha's for a year, and he's responsible for the dining room, and he also, he cleans the tables, sweeps and mops, and cleans the bathrooms. He also makes sure the beverage bar is stocked with lids, straws, and napkins. When Jose is working, you never have to worry that you will come upon a full trashcan. The last few weeks of February, the customers have noticed how great his work is and his positive attitude, and have gone out of their way to tell the manager and leave him more generous tips for his outstanding work. So a shout-out to him for doing such a great job and getting on with that recognition. The mobile lab is coming around, but we already talked about that, and you had the lab here for the weekend. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April sixteenth. And the next committee report is personnel, Dr. Yerina.
Thank you. Tonight, we had, as most of you know, a committee meeting on March fourth. That meeting and the one before it on February fourth, as well as the, some of the public comment during the February twenty-fifth full board meeting had to do with the job descriptions, and in particular, the one related to the proposed SPO.
Dr. Yerina, could we just try this as college microphone for summary here? This isn't working well.
Let me move closer, so... As I mentioned, the last three meetings that were personnel has been discussed had to do with various job descriptions, some of which we have on the agenda tonight, and particularly the public comment related to that had to do in large part with the SPO position that's been proposed, or two positions, actually. So that's, those are what the notes of the meeting primarily cover. So tonight I have four motions that are related to job descriptions and new positions. The first has to do with the new job descriptions, or revised job descriptions, for the Assistant Transportation Director. This is a position that's changing from one person to another. And the second is, has to do with the Secretary of, for Business and Technology Departments. This job is clearly different in that it has been revised to the office duties related to the technology department, as well as the tax activities in the business office. So I make a motion that we approve those two job descriptions related to the Assistant Transportation Director and the Secretary for Business and Technology Department.
Questions or comments from board members? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
The second position, or I should say, the new position for the second motion has to do with the instructional coaches that were part of Dr. Bolton's multi-part proposal first brought forward to the board at the Personnel Committee on March fourth. There are three of these proposed, one of which will relate to the writing projects that are ongoing in the district, and may be sunsetted in three years, once the decision has been made whether that has been successful and to what degree it's needed. The other two are for quasi-permanent, if not permanent, positions for the district instructional coaches. So I make it in the form of a motion that we approve this position and the instructional coach job description.
Questions or comments from board members?
I'm going to, excuse me, this is, yes, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I do not agree with the proposal to cut the supervisor of positions from six to four. Nevertheless, I do think the instructional coaches will provide very good support for the district as well as...
Other questions or comments? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
The third motion has to do with the approval of a new position, or two new positions, for the SPO position. These are, in essence, conversion of two of our security guards into school police officers. Obviously, this is going to disappoint, and there have been many comments from the audience about this, so at this point, I am making the motion that we approve the, these two positions in the form of an SPO.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members?
Yes, I do. I do not support this, this motion. I made it because the board as a whole has decided to go forward with it, but I have real reservations about putting armed school police officers in the high school. I've thought about this a lot. I know there's a lot of public comment. As I mentioned, when we first introduced this on March fourth, or when Dr. Bolton first introduced this, this was a very divisive issue. I still believe that. I hear both sides of it, and both sides are very passionate about it. I went as far as asking my children and related to the grandchildren about the situation in their schools, and I happen to have seven grandchildren. They're in a variety of places, both traditional public, public charter, and private schools, and they're in grade levels ranging from kindergarten to senior in high school. None of them have armed guards in their schools, so this is, these are in other states, obviously, but, and they were rather surprised that I was asking this question, so in the end, I just cannot support this proposal as it's made.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Thank you. This vote or death on the cake is about security. It's about security of our kids, our teachers, and our administration. It's that simple. At board meetings following the Bartlett tragedy, we heard from many concerned parents passionately fearing for armed security presence. As this board continued to review, refine, and discuss the overall security of the district, more recently, we've heard from some in the community speaking out against armed security and their fears of having armed security in the school. The fact is, on average, there is police protect presence in the high school three to four days a week. Over the past several years, this board, as well as previous board and administration, have listened to all points of view and invested a vast amount of time and resources engaging security experts and Penn Ridge Regional Police. We have also reached out to the surrounding districts. Based on these discussions and recommendations, we've already implemented numerous security enhancements district-wide, ranging from secure vestibules, visitor screening, and more than six hundred video cameras district-wide. That's just to name a few. One recommendation is also clear from all the inputs gathered. All have recommended an armed security presence. Specifically, in a letter to the district dated April twenty sixteen, Penn Ridge Regional Police recommended an SRO be deployed at the high school. Most of our neighboring districts already have armed security personnel. According to these news, more than seventy-two percent of high schools nationwide have deployed armed security personnel. Over the past fourteen months, this board and administration have engaged in numerous community forums and discussed the topic in numerous board and committee meetings. I can assure the community, we've heard all points of view. I consider it my primary responsibility to provide a secure and safe environment to our students, our staff... our students, our staff and our administration. It would be reckless for me to ignore the recommendations of security experts we have consulted, or to delay any action on this matter further. I urge each of you to vote in favor of this proposal. Additionally, all four surrounding municipalities' police chiefs, including Penridge Regional, have recommended adding armed security to this, to our security protocol. Thank you.
I just want to add, as Mr. Kraus already pointed out, that we did do some upgrades to our security. But as I thought about this, and I was listening to Mrs. Baines Clements' comments on the way, on my drive up, there was a very thoughtful and careful process that we've gone through over the last several years. And it's just like if you're a Boy Scout, or if you were, like I was, got EMT training, you learn to triage, and you address whatever the most acute need is first, right? So when people came to us, and didn't even just come to us, but the administration, the guidance counselors, the teachers in the schools, people recognized that we had needs amongst our students for social emotional help. And that was the first thing that we addressed. We went right to that and did what we needed to do to get those children the help that they needed immediately. So that was one step. Then when we had the security, and this is when we first coming on the board, there was a firm called MDTactical, they did an evaluation of our schools. They, they gave us recommendations, and of those things, the most urgently, as Mr. Kraus already said, the vestibules in the schools, the activities. We went through and we, we upgraded every single one of the buildings to have a secure vestibule for you to not be able to just walk into the school. We did the cameras. So I just want to reemphasize how long and how deliberate and how careful and how thoughtful this process has been, and that we have listened every step of the way to what the communities had to say, what the experts have had to say. And I'm quite comfortable supporting this measure tonight, because I really feel like we have, we have considered it from every angle. We have consulted all the experts that we can consult. Each one of us has thought about it very carefully. I won't put words in any of my colleagues' mouths, but I will tell you that my personal feelings on this, number one is the security and the safety of our students. But I also want to make sure, I know that there was a comment about the, they, these people, we're approving the positions tonight, but we're not actually approving the people. There will be another step where we have to approve the candidates that have presented to us. And if you don't feel that they meet the training or requirements, then maybe we won't approve them. See what I'm saying? So there's going to be another step of consideration. Myself, I'll let you know, I'm going to respect that they'll be very highly trained. I was happy to hear that part of municipal police training that they're going to be required to have includes mental health screening, evaluation. You want to analyze these people in many different ways. So I just wanted to put that out there, that assurance out there, this isn't something that I'm coming to lightly, and my observations of all of my colleagues over the last several years that we've been discussing it, I've never seen one of my colleagues take it lightly either. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to provide some thoughts on some of the public comment that was made tonight, as well as address some of the updates that I provided at the Personnel Committee. Since our last board meeting, there have been multiple conversations about this, just to provide some of that. This situation in the district takes very, very seriously not just the physical safety, but also the psychological safety of all of our students and our staff and our communities. And, and this recommendation is not any more or less important than all of those other things that people have mentioned. We're going to be having a conversation about the recommendation on additional guidance councils, because that's important in terms of having those people for students. The additional, the adding of the last couple of years of social workers, of crisis councils, of threat assess, threat assessment teams, we talked about Rachel's challenge. And so this is not just a physical safety, but this is another school in terms of providing both the psychological and the physical safety of all of the people involved. The district, and I will make a commitment that you know that we have and will continue to evaluate all options that will improve the safety and the wellness of our students and our staff. I do want to speak to and ask Mr. Miller if he would again speak to the qualifications and the trainings, because there was some conversation this evening about what qualifications these men or women would be required to have. So I know you've spoken to this a couple of times, and if you would give us an overview of what the qualifications are for these people compared to an SRO, just a school police officer, and our recommendation is for the school police officer.
Right, so under Act 44 statute, you can employ SPOs, school police officers, compared to SROs in two different ways. You can contract with retired federal agents or retired state miss or military police officers or sheriffs. All of them must, we must ensure that they undergo any training required by MOPAC, that they, and that they go through the typical background checks that are required for police officers. In addition, anybody who, as we've talked about, who is authorized to carry a firearm before he's allowed to carry, or she is allowed to carry a firearm, has to complete MOPAC training, Municipal Police Officer Education Training Commission, that's been, and have graduated, or have graduated from the State Police Academy and been deployed as a state trooper with the state police. So this is not a situation where someone who is a security guard with no training whatsoever is therefore hired. I know Ms. Cullings' point that if you are approving receiving a job description, you are not approving a hire of a particular individual, certainly would be my recommendation is cancel it. Ultimately, when you hire somebody who approved this job description for SPO, you see someone who has previously been employed as a law enforcement officer and has the appropriate training that law enforcement officers have, and the experience to do with it. But again, to your point, Dr. Fulton, there is a standard requirement for someone to be a SPO.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And another piece that has been said multiple times, part of the money that is being, this proposal in terms of the budget for this, did speak to trainings, and there are minimum trainings that are required in the act, but we have said out loud that that won't be enough for the two men or women that we hire, that beyond the minimum trainings that are required, we are also going to have specific trainings for school police officers. There are routine school resource officers, school police officers, trainings that are offered locally, and so we will make sure that those candidates do go through those on a regular basis to get specific training for being in a school setting, as well as educational training. It is very different to be a school police officer around 16-year-olds than it would be in a community. And so we made a commitment, actually, for all of our security guards, not just our school police officers, but we think that's important for all of the people who are often first line in terms of relationships when someone's being escorted. And so to make sure that all of those men and women who serve as our security guards or our school police officers, if this would be approved, have that educational training as well, some of that educational psychology in how to handle some of those situations, how to defuse something that might be happening in a hallway or cafeteria. We made that commitment and it has been budgeted as part of the recommendation for those trainings to be provided. I did provide an update at the Personnel Committee, but want to say it again publicly here, that since the last board meeting, I've taken the opportunity to meet with a group of student leaders at the high school, student leaders, as well as high school teachers, to provide information, to make sure that we answer any questions that they have, as also, and to gather their feedback and feelings on this recommendation. So we have done that. We also, Dr. Price and I, have quarterly meetings with the four local police chiefs that Mr. Kraus mentioned, and so this obviously has been a topic of conversation. And the four chiefs, Chief Blake from Penridge Regional, Chief Hillias from Percocie Borough, Chief Oftner from Bedminster, and Chief Englehard from Hilltown Township, they were not able to be here tonight, but they all did say that it was okay, and they wanted us to make sure that we express to everyone in attendance that they are all in complete support of this recommendation for the addition of school police officers. So, thank you.
As I was considering, and listening to everything that everybody's been saying really over the past few years, I went back to some meetings from last year, and when students came out and when parents came out after the Parkland shooting, and some of the things that they, they come to us and share. And one of the things that both stood out to me, you know, listening to it now, there was a student who came and spoke right after the Parkland. Her name was Sydney Dyer. She was a freshman, so now she's a sophomore, and she introduced herself as one of the founders of the Safe Schools Committee that they formed at the high school. She shared ideas that the group, that the committee had come up with, as far as, you know, what they, what we could do to make school safer. And one of the things that she mentioned was that they would like more security guards released each day, and then she quoted, she said, "In fact, State Representative Rosemary Brown proposed a bill just five days after the Parkland shooting that would require at least one armed guard present at all times during school hours and after-school activities." She was proposing armed guards, and that committee from the high school was proposing armed guards at all of the school hours because they were scared, because they wanted to be safe. She talked about metal detectors and bombs. Some of the other things that she talked about, as I'm going through the list, they're all things that, as I'm looking through them, are things that we've accomplished, and so I think that's important to, to, to talk about too, that this isn't one of the first things on that list. She talked about the fact that we had four entrances that were not being monitored and that were unlocked. That is, those are, that's now not the case, now they're all being monitored. She talked about the fact that we had fire drills once a month, but Alice drills twice a year, and they were all locked in the same period of the day, so they only knew how to react in one period in one class, and they wouldn't know how to react the rest of the day, my understanding is that that's now not the case. She talked about, you know, some other things. There's some things, obviously, that the public shares with us and says that they want us to do that we can't really talk about in public, because if we told the public everything that's being done safety-wise, it makes our kids less safe, it makes our staff less safe. So there's some things I'm not going to get into. But there were some comments that she made that really stood out to me. She said that we need to improve SEL, so that, she said, every student should feel connected and cared about, and she said that they should be required to join a meaningful club or buddy with kids in, in other grade levels. She said that every student should feel safe, have a purpose, and feel that they have their own work. And I thought that was really powerful, and when we listened to that wording, it reminded me of what they're trying to do with Rachel's challenge. The same language, the same language that that student asked for a year ago. And listening to that language now, and how that language mirrors what Daryl Scott said, you know, it was, it was kind of powerful for me watching her say that when I watched it back. She talked about how the Safe Schools Committee is passionate about helping to make the school safer and collaborating with the district. And so, you know, I just wanted to share that as a look back to something that, you know, students have learned and represented in the class. This is, we're in a tough spot on this board, because whatever decision we make, we have to live with that decision. And so if we make the wrong one, and our, and the kids in this district aren't safe, that's something that we have to live with in the future. And so when all of the security experts are coming to us and telling us this is what we're supposed to do, we're not the security experts. When you look at the fact that we're one of the last school districts in the area to go in this direction, and what the recommendations are, you know, if we ignore the recommendations of the security officer, of the police departments, of all our security experts, and we make the opposite decision to what was recommended, and something happens, we all have to live with that. And so with these votes, it's very important to weigh that and try to make a decision that's going to be safest for students. So.
Are there other questions or comments from any of the board members? Well, we have a first and a second. So we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Made motion, passes eight one.
The last motion on the personnel agenda tonight is a motion to approve Kaylee Cooper as Communications and Public Relations Coordinator, a salary of $49,500, effective at her, her earliest, from, from May, I'm sorry.
Okay, so can I, Mr. Kraus? Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
With that appointment, Ms. Cooper is currently employed, and we're working with her current employer to have her start in the first and second week of April, which I don't have specific dates, and that's Sam White. But with that appointment, I want to also recognize, although he's so shy that I believe he's left the room for our recognition, I want to thank Joe Ferry for his 11 years of service to Penridge and wish him well with his new adventures. So, thank you, Joe.
Lastly, the, excuse me, the next Personnel Committee meeting will be scheduled, or will be held on Monday, April 5th, 2019, in the District Administrative Board.
Okay, policy, Mr. Irwin?
Hello. We will have a couple of approvals for, um, to first reading, that was the first one. There's a couple of them, so we'll start right over to the top. All right, so the first one, policy number 121, which is non-discrimination qualified due to disabilities, policy 222, tobacco nicotine, policy number 229, fully certifiable, policy number 223, tobacco, policy number 904, other companies of school next, policy number 96, and these are going on.
Do we have a second? I'll say. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. The next policy meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 25th. Thank you. Technology, Mr. Irwin?
There was a large technology meeting, which will be back in April, when we begin.
Okay, the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you. The Upper Bucks County Technical School, we met Thursday, March 21st. Some of the things we discussed were our skills district winner, and there are lots of them, which Mr. Walton, uh, Walton Tushon and our student representative. We did have the most medals from any of the districts that were competing, and we're one of the smaller schools, so that was great, and I'd like to wish all of our participants good luck in our sheen. Our student of the month were, student of the month, four, we had two, they couldn't decide for the graphics, which should be, so Sarah Schaefer from Palaces and Colin Patterson from Quagertown. We approved the 2019-2020 school calendar, which mirrors the setting schools. We were able to accept $97,010 in grants from three different sources. Also, I have, we have some, a lot of activities coming up. We have a Spring Occupation Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday. If anybody's an industry expert and they would like to join and share their knowledge of their skill or trade, we are always looking for volunteers to be on that. They help guide the teachers into what should be being taught in their curriculum. Skills Professional Development Conference coming up, the fourth through the fifth. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny is coming up, which was already touched on, and I have a flyer, if anybody's interested, I would like it, or welcome to have mine. My calendar's already marked. The state competition for Skills USA is going to be 410 through 412. Our next JOC board meeting is 418, and everything else I'll share at our next board. Our next JOC board meeting is 418, and everything else I'll share our next board meeting. The senior ceremony that's here, that's a big, great time, you want to come out and see all the kids graduating. That's nice. We already talked about our budget, and that was a big effort on everybody's part. All our, all three districts worked really hard, and it's a great budget, so thank you for that. And I just wanted to add too that we have night classes over there, and I don't know how much people are aware of that, and that's something that people can take advantage of if you want to learn the skill. And hopefully, we can get that posted too, so that people can have access and see what those classes are that are available, so you can see if there's, you know, sort of night classes that you would like to take.
Okay, Act 48, Mrs. Walters?
Act 48 met on March 14th, and will meet again on Thursday, noon.
Thank you. Okay, the Penrich Area Coordinating Committee. Ms. Thompson?
The Penrich Area Coordinating Committee met on February 28th at the Penrich Community Center in Silverdale. Mr. David Rice represented the Penrich School District on my behalf, and Dave Nyman from East Rock Hill Township was the facilitator from the municipality, roundtable discussion. Claire Black from Silver, sorry. Claire Black from Silverdale noted that the borough has approved bids for the Green Street Project, which we've been talking about, and will use $147,000 approximately in grant funding. They've approved their MS4 plan and have issued a proposal from PPNL to convert the borough's streetlights to LED at no cost. We'd love to hear that. So, and there will be an elective bill saving. West Rock Hill, they reported that they adopted their new comprehensive plan, approved an updated submission for MS4, and have begun planning for the Holiday House full season. Stay tuned. Also, East Rock Hill Township, Mr. Nyman shared that their quarry injunction, now this is something that everybody's been kind of following, and we should be getting another update at the next meeting, but he shared that the quarry injunction was per federal, at the federal court level, and a decision should be forthcoming. They're working with the Bucks County Planning Commission to update their comprehensive plan. They've adopted a Riker Charter ordinance for North Rock Hill Road, and they have engaged Heritage Conservancy, Conservancy, to administer a new open space preservation initiative concentrating in the East Ranch Corridor. And in Bedminster, they reported that C.R. Wen and Associates have been appointed as the township engineer. They authorized the purchase of a new pickup truck and a new backhoe loader, approved the ordinance's updates for quarry provisions, and are reviewing an Airbnb ordinance, and I can't read the best of the writing, so. So, also, Mr. Ted Heinbach, who is the Penrich Community Center, I believe he's the director, director there, Mr. Rice? I think he's the director. I'm sorry, Mr. Heinbach, if you're watching this and I got your position incorrect, I apologize, but he wanted us to be aware of recent water damage that the Penrich Community Center has suffered, and we've been getting some updates about some of the needs at the, the community center. So, just being aware of these items. So our next meeting will be this Thursday, you're all welcome to come. And we should be getting an update on the federal court hearing from Mr. Nyman at that meeting. It will be at the Penrich Community Center at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. So I actually happen to know what happened with the federal hearing, so I'll just share a little bit about that. So there were two parts to the case that was, that they brought. One had to do with the quarry, and one had to do with the asphalt plant. And essentially, the, the judge ordered that they couldn't, that the township did not have jurisdiction over the quarry to make decisions about whether or not, it took additional restrictions on that, but that falls under the, under DEPA. And as for the asphalt plant, the judge indicated somewhat of an opinion, but said that he wasn't going to rule on it because he felt like it was not something that he should be ruling on in a federal court, and so his recommendation was to send that back to the lower level, you know, to the local level, at the local level, deal with that part of the case. So that part is, is going to be ongoing, so really, so DEPA is going to solve the one issue, the local authorities are going to solve the other issue, so that's, that's where they are with that.
Mrs. Baines Clemens, I'm so sorry that I forgot to mention that school district was, as Mr. Rice was representing the school district and giving the report to the municipalities about what was going on, he did reiterate the Rachel's Challenge, the High School Musical Cinderella, and also, Mr. Rice has donated and maintains a Penrich Community Event website that he started, and if you want to check it out, you can find it at www.penrichcommunityevents.com.
Okay, next is the Penrich Community Education Foundation.
Thank you. The PCEF met on March 2nd, and I just have two things to report for tonight. On Monday night, April 1st, the PCEF is having a Kirk Night, and you've known with Kirk Nights, the organization gets a percentage of the profits from Hopper for that night, so it's from 5:00 to 9:00. So if you don't have dental plans, you have dental plans now, you can support the PCEF. And our lovely evening program is on Tuesday, April 29th, and that is at 6:30 at Soulish School Theater, and once again, that's the night where we recognize members of the Penrich Community as friends of education, and we also have performing groups from the high school that come and give you a snippet of what they've done throughout the years. So if you've missed their performances or you want to know them again, you can come by and it's a really lovely evening. So you can buy tickets for that on the PCEF website, which you can access through the school district website, you see the emblem there, and you can click on that, and it will bring you to the website where you can buy the tickets. Thank you. Our next meeting is April 6th, Saturday, April 29th.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. And I just want to thank Mrs. Cullen for all of the hard work that she's really put in. She's been a huge asset to the Penrich Community Education Foundation, and done a lot of fundraising to help them, and so thank you from all of us for, for all of that hard work and dedication. We appreciate it.
Next up is Old Business. The None, New Business. Then we are back to questions and comments from the guests.
Took the microphone away.
Good evening, Diane Herron, Hilltown Township. I have a few actual questions regarding some of the financials and the consent calendar. This evening, you approved a list of payments for student activity funds accounts. Included in that was an $11,486 check to Penrich School District, check number 2655 appears. However, when I went through the additional documentation, looking for that check to determine what that was, I noted that you're providing the check on from March, but you're providing the SAP accounts from February. So there's no way to cross-reference if you're paying for something to have that supported by the financial statement, but the students supplied and approved that purchase. And in this particular case, it's in excess of $11,000, and I was wondering if somebody could perhaps get back to me and tell me what that was for, since it's such an absorbent amount.
Any other questions or comments from guests? Press? Any questions or comments from the press? We move on to announcements. An executive session will be held following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel label matters. The next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 15th, 2019. I'll make the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.